No, we just got this one.
How we?
Do you want me to write something up?
No, no, I got it. I got it all. Okay, I guess that's it, Charlie. I got the right vest on tonight.
Okay.
Okay. We're gonna do it a little different. This is two thousand seventeen, so I'm gonna open the meeting at seven forty-five. And I'd like to introduce our members. On my right is Jason Norman, Casey Bailey, Kathy Fancin. And the secretary is Julie House. Dan McDonald's absent tonight. So we got, the situation is when we have four members, you have to have a four zero vote to get approval. And so you do have an option of waiting till another meeting, but this looks like it's a renewal, so it's a pretty good option on your part. But anyway, you do have the option, so if you want to continue, I'll read the, I'll read the.
We would like to continue.
Okay, good, great. So the first thing, the first and only thing on our agenda tonight is the Attorney Board of Appeals will hold a public hearing on Wednesday, January fourth, two thousand seventeen, at seven thirty P M. In the main meeting room of Town Hall. Main Street Global Mass under general laws, forty A as amended for application two thousand sixteen dash ten made by Richard and Anne Marie Dela.
Delacano.
Delacano. Delacano. That'd be an English name, I think. Delatana, owners or residences at nine, ten, and Hill Road Extension, Groveland, plot eighteen, lot five, for special permit for accessory in-law apartment according to all applicable sections of the Town of Groveland Bylaw of section three oh one point three. Assuming that you both are Richard and Anne Marie.
Correct.
Yes. We have the application. Application with a. Go ahead. Why don't you tell us what you're gonna do? What's.
My sister Elizabeth is a single mom, and she is going to be moving into the in-law apartment. So we're not doing any, anything different to it. We're not adding on. We're just allowing her to move in with us.
Now, as I read the application, it appears that this, this was there when you purchased the property.
It's been there since the nineteen seventies. It just was, the gentleman who bought the house before us also had it zoned as an in-law, and the previous owners also had it zoned as an in-law. So it's been an in-law apartment since the nineteen seventies with a couple people changing hands.
The space is over the garage, correct?
It is.
Yeah.
It has its own separate entrance through, we can go through either side of the house, but it has its own separate entrance.
Okay, but it, the garage is attached to the house, right? According to the sketch.
The house of the house, yeah.
Hence the back.
Actually, it's not over the garage anymore when they, the prior, prior owner did change. It used to be a garage that it was over, and then there was a.
Carport.
Carport. Now the carport is a Natasha Garage, so.
Okay.
It was all.
Is it, is this, is this drawing, an active drawing? It shows.
It was done on ten thirteen sixteen.
Yes.
Yes.
So where, where would the carport be?
If you're looking, the carport would be on the left side. It is not a carport anymore. It's a full garage.
So now it's over half of the garage instead of the full.
Yeah, the carport was attached previous.
So the apartment hasn't changed at all, just the part of the building underneath did. So instead of it being a carport and a garage, now it's just one garage, and the apartment is still above it.
Only if, if it's only over the garage and not the carport.
There's no more carport.
There's no more carport.
It's one garage with the apartment over it attached to the house.
And that has not changed in any way or form since the seventies. Well, actually, I think they did put a couple new windows, but the structure of it and the size of it has not changed.
And the garage is actually attached to the home, right?
Yes.
Yes.
Thank you. And it's six hundred and, hold on.
Two twenty-five.
Six hundred and twenty-five square feet.
Yes. I've seen that. Yeah, that's great. Hey, look at that. Be careful, Charlie, because you may take your job. You're getting ready to retire, so if you learn that real good, you might be in. This seems pretty straightforward. Is there, is anyone here that wants to speak in favor of this appeal? You gotta identify yourself.
Mitchell Croner, three Cannon Hill Road Extension, and I am in favor of the application.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We got some other people. Anyone else want to talk?
Chris Gary, Cannon Hill Extension also a matter, and we are not opposed.
Well, I'm sorry, can I have your name again?
Yeah, yeah, a little bit louder.
Gary?
G E R Y?
G E R R Y.
And which, and what number extension?
Eight.
Eight. How about you, sir?
Colin Stokes, seven Cannon Hill Extension, in favor of.
This is one of the first times that we've had, one of these that we have, all the neighbors here are all in favor. Now, what about your, your sister? Does she want it?
I think so.
Anyone opposed? Your son says he's opposed over there. I gave his hands up.
He can't even hear you. He's pretty good at fun.
Yeah, yeah, that's right. He's got a mic.
Good job, buddy.
Well, hearing none. I'll close the hearing at nine fifty-two.
Eight, seven fifty-two.
Seven fifty-two.
It feels like nine fifty-two.
I was gonna say. Long have we been sitting here.
Do we have any, any questions here? Let's see if I go.
I don't have any questions or any discussion.
No, I'm, I'm pretty clear.
Did you, did you review them, anything in there?
I was just looking, trying to refresh my memory.
Okay. All right, well, I'm gonna read the, this is.
Do you want a motion?
Yeah, we need a, yeah, we need a motion. Yeah, let's see. How about a motion to.
I move to approve the request for a special permit for an accessory dwelling unit as depicted on the application.
Twenty-six, two sixteen.
Twenty sixteen dash ten.
We, we, wanna be subject to this boilerplate?
Subject to the conditions imposed on in-law apartments according to the bylaw and our decision.
Can you try to read this?
Yes.
Okay, I'll read, I'll read these, and then what will happen is we'll take a vote, and Julie will give your, I'll tell you how it works after that. But number one, that the accessory in-law apartment shall be constructed to, to the submitted footprint only. The accessory in-law apartment shall not exceed the specifications of submitted plans. The accessory in-law apartment shall be no greater than nine hundred square feet excluding unfinished basements, workshops, unfinished attics, closets, and ground space. Said accessory in-law apartment cannot be converted into a two-family residence according to the zoning, according to the Groveland zoning bylaws. The accessory in-law apartment shall be brought back to a single-family residence if the change of ownership or the primary family members move out of said residence. All submitted plans will be complied with this agreement, and any deviation of or changes shall, from said plans will require additional Groveland Zoning Board of Appeals hearing relative to proposed changes prior to commencement of said changes. The accessory in-law apartment shall not change the single-family characteristics or the dwelling except for, for the provision of additional access or egress. The accessory in-law apartment shall meet all Massachusetts building codes, apply with current safety, health, construction requirements before occupancy, and every change of occupancy. The applicant shall meet all local zoning bylaws, the applicant shall meet all local bylaws and others. The applicant shall meet Groveland Board of Health rules and regulations, the applicant shall meet all local zoning setbacks, no off-street parking will be allowed. No, excuse me, no on-street parking will be allowed. All residents will park off-street on the existing driveway or propose expansion of the existing driveway. The owner occupancy shall occupy one of the dwelling units of said premises at all times. The applicant shall allow the Groveland Zoning Board of Appeals to conduct an annual inspection of, to verify compliance with the special permit conditions. The Groveland Board of Appeals deserves the right to retain the services of a Groveland Building Inspector during such annual site inspection. Upon change of ownership of said property, this special permit on accessory in-law apartment and certificate of occupancy of said in-law apartment shall become null and void. This special permit is subject to recall. Is that the one you want to take out?
Yeah.
All right, let's take it. We've had some changes in the law, so let's just. This permit is non-assignable. The decision, notice of decision on application two oh one six dash ten shall be filed and recorded in Essex Southern District Registry of Deeds and receipt of said transaction delivered to the building inspector prior to the issuance of a building permit for construction of an accessory in-law apartment according to said decision. If the rights authorized to the applicant and property owner shall, by said, said special permit shall not be exercised within two years from the date of granting special permit, which is the filing date of the town clerk and board's decision, and such, such special permit shall become null and void unless substantial use thereof has commenced except for good cause. If, in the case of a permit for construction, if construction has not been begun by such date except for good cause. The town clerks are certified on the copy of the filed decision within twenty days. Have, have elapsed since filing, that no appeal has been filed, or that if such appeal has been filed, it has been dismissed or denied, and the applicant has said the documents shall be mailed to the applicant or the owner. Okay. Any, any discussions? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, fine. You, you're fine. Now Julie's gonna tell you what really happened.
Okay, yeah. Okay, we have fourteen days to, you know, get your decision ready, signed, and then there's the twenty-day appeal period. And I will be sending you a letter to let you know what date you can go up to the town clerk's office to pick up a copy. Actually, to pick up the original decision. And then after that point, you need to go down to the registry of deeds, and you need to have it recorded. Then they, they stamp it, and then you need to bring that original copy back to the town clerk.
Okay.
But she'll send you a letter to tell you all that.
I'm gonna send you a letter.
She's gonna have to remember it all right now.
So you're all set?
All right, thank you.
Congratulations.
That's all right, thank you.
Thank you, all your neighbors for coming in. And I hope you had fun.
It's gonna be sad, it ended so quickly.
Well, you can come in next month.
So you can get yourself on TV. Come wait down here.
Oh, you didn't get him.
Well, no, you went too fast. You're gonna slow down.
Wait, wait, wait. Come here. Come behind here. Come behind here and sit next to him, so he could be on TV.
There we go.
There you go, Anthony.
All your friends are gonna see this on TV.
All right, come on, buddy.
Okay.
All right, come on, buddy.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay.
We meet the first Wednesday of every month. Come anytime.
Great. Well, have a nice evening.
I definitely will.
Happy New Year, you guys. We have a, a letter, we, just, I wanna just read and put in the record regarding last, last week's, last month's meeting letter regarding the Eric Harper issue, and this, this letter is on behalf of Eric Harper, trustee of Essex Park, owner of the property in caption, which is four forty-one Main Street. By letter dated and filed with the town clerk on September twenty-ninth, two thousand sixteen, the trustee appealed to the zoning board appeals for decisions issued by the bill of commission relative to building one oh five, in parentheses, the appeal. By letter dated and filed with the town clerk on October fifth, two thousand sixteen, the trustees petitioned Z B A for minor, minor dimensional variance relative to building one oh five, in parentheses, the petition. The appeal and the petition was, was assigned by Z B A file number and subject to a single notice of hearing by decision dated and filed with the town clerk on December nineteenth, two thousand sixteen, the board granted the appeal by overturning the building commissioner's decision. The board's decision will become final in twenty days after filing with the town clerk, assuming the town clerk has not received an appeal by such date, so. So certifies the decision. At such time, the board's decision on trustee's appeal becomes final as indicated by the town clerk certification. Trustee hereby agrees to withdraw the, its petition with understanding that the board consents to such withdrawal without prejudice. So the, the short end of this whole letter is that the, the variance part is being withdrawn, subject to the certification of the appeal. Okay, so we just put this on the file? We need, we don't, we get a vote on that?
No, it's just a withdrawal.
Yeah, withdrawal, we'll put it on file. Okay. Oh, before I go to these here, the, I think it was, the town clerk sent everyone an email relative to taking the ethics online.
I didn't get an email. Maybe it's in my junk mail or something.
I don't think so.
It was several weeks ago.
Yeah, it was a while ago. Uh, do you, do you know the site? You put, you go online, you have to go online to take the ethics.
Do you know who sent it? Was it?
Anne Brody sent it.
Did Anne send it?
Yeah, so you go online, you take this, and then, and they'll, they'll put a certificate.
It was on the twenty-first.
She sent it on the twenty-first.
Hmm.
Uh, we'll look it up and find out what, what it is, but it's.
Yeah, it must be my junk mail.
It's the state, uh, Commonwealth.
Everything I get free out of it was in my junk, like I have to look for it. So I'll look for it. Thank you.
Yeah, what's, um.
Hold on.
Jason, what's your last name?
Norman, N O R, M A N D. Yeah, I don't see anything here on the twenty-first.
Yeah, it doesn't look like I got, can I go forward it, yeah?
My phone's in the car.
Charlie, so you got a new, uh, worker.
N O R, M A N D.
Yeah.
J, Norman?
J M Norman.
J M Norman.
At gmail dot com.
Are you sending it to him?
Yeah.
Okay. Do you want me to send it to you again?
Yeah, would you, can I, can we send it to my working?
Yeah, what is it?
Kathy.
Uh, Walter.
Okay.
George Kathy. That's right. Oh, yeah.
I got it.
No, it's okay. We're all set. Listen, I, I, you know, when I also, I mean, missing and thanking Julie for coming to the meeting tonight, because I got a call at five o'clock. She was just getting off a plane in Logan, so I really appreciate, appreciate you coming to the meeting tonight.
Yep.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you, Julie.
The, one of the other items we have is a bill payable to Julie in the amount of two oh two ninety, and. We'll pass that around, and then the, the other, the only other item that we have would be the, the minutes of December seventh meeting.
Tom, could you pass the invoice down, please?
I can.
Thank you.
Do you have a checkbook with you?
No.
I just thought I'd ask.
No, I don't.
We all signed this, right?
Yeah. Any ballgames lately, Charlie?
We all wanted to go.
Oh, really? Okay. Oh, my gosh, really?
The, the woman who was just in, was she the one that had the different check amount? Did you work that out with her?
It was a, it wasn't a three-pointer.
Didn't she send it in at four fifty? It was supposed to be three fifty.
Did it get beat you?
The check that she sent you. It was the lady who was just, yeah?
Yes.
But you got her the difference back?
Oh, yeah, yeah. No, what she, what happened was that, um, she came in and took her old check.
That's a tough one to lose. I'd rather lose by a dozen than buy.
I just wanted to make sure it was resolved, that's all.
It's much better to lose by a lot, so you don't.
I think you have to sign that?
But, you know, that way they, he should. Wow. Wow. Wow.
I wanted to make sure she got her money back, that's all.
When my, when my son was in high school, I, I told her they had a, they had that five overtime state championship game, nineteen ninety-two. They, they won in the fifth overtime, they won. But it was a, he went into like one o'clock in the morning. It was like a pretty late, pretty late night. So any, any questions on the two oh two ninety?
No.
All those in favor?
Aye. Well, let's make a motion to approve.
Oh, we make a motion to approve.
Yes.
Okay, make a motion.
I make a motion to approve.
Invoice number, is there an invoice number?
Uh, no number.
Invoice dated?
Dated, yeah, one four seventeen.
One four seventeen. Four, two hundred and two dollars.
Two oh two ninety.
It's a sixteen.
Oh, yeah. Oh, yeah, but that would be.
Cause it was for last, right, it's for last month.
Last month.
That was the date of the service, not the day of the.
Oh, yeah. I think you have a date of January fourth, ninth, two thousand sixteen.
The invoice isn't behind it. Isn't it, she liked to invoice two thousand seventeen dash one?
Yeah, so it's January fourth, two thousand seventeen, but on here, it's sixteen.
Oh, okay, I see.
But the date on that line.
Okay, yeah, you're right. Right, we're gonna put it, yeah, uh.
I think they're just passing it on.
Yeah, across, it's, uh, okay.
So I make a motion to approve invoice number two thousand seventeen dash one from Julie House for two oh two ninety.
Two oh two ninety, that's correct. Seconded by Casey.
All those in fa, all those in favor?
No.
Second.
Casey. What's, it's hard to believe today, it's forty-eight degrees and it's January fourth.
It's great, isn't it?
Oh, yeah.
Wish all the winters were like this.
Yeah, it's good, it's, it's not good for the skiers, but it's good for us.
Oh, yeah, but they got the snow.
Yeah, they got it up north.
Yeah, they can have it up north.
That's fine, they can have it there.
As long as they can find the snow, that's fine with me. Yeah, although I, I will have to, I will say, all my classmates are down in Florida. Call me every day to tell me what the temperature is.
My mother does sometimes, too.
Yeah, they wanna make sure that I know it's eighty degrees.
She's like, it's seventy-eight degrees.
E-mail me or call me. So I, I thank them. I thank them very much.
Sorry, this is a long.
That's all right.
Here's the reason why I asked, because it's at four fifty, yeah, that's why I wanted to make sure she got her money back, that's all.
I don't think Kathy's ready yet. Well, can we talk about another topic?
Go ahead, yeah, what, you, you had a meeting, go ahead.
So, no, just curious about, um, our forum decisions and stuff, like all the stuff you just read for the in-law department.
Yeah, that seems a little promising.
It, yeah, and like, it, it seems like almost all of that stuff, if not all of it, is, you know, things that are the law anyway, no matter what, whether it's included in the decision or not, like that they have to build it in conformity with the building code. And I just wonder if we really need to have that kind of standard thing that doesn't, won't apply and everything, like, you know, for this one, it's already built. So a, a lot of the stuff that was kind of about it being built doesn't really seem like it.
Well, I think part of the, part of the intent is so that the applicant knows the conditions too, when they're getting it.
Yeah. I, I think that.
They, they, yeah, they, they wouldn't necessarily know that.
Some of those things.
Did they get it built in accordance with the building code?
Well, this one, this one was a little different, because this was a, a transfer, but sometimes they come in with, with new, and so.
Right. Yeah.
I, I think that's sort of, that was a boilerplate one that probably, you know, I agree that when I was, obviously when I was reading it, it was, you know, it's.
And the part about having to record it with, you know, that'll comes when you, when we send the decision, you know, it's, it seems like we could streamline it and, and make it a little bit easier to understand and to.
Yeah, yeah, I, I cut down the, 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 there was one, the other special permit had twenty-seven, I cut that down on eight, so.
Yeah.
If you wanted to look at it and cross it out, I mean, I'll give.
I mean, I'm happy to take a look at them.
I do, maybe what, what would work is if we said, subject to the conditions, which we give them a copyright then. These conditions, and, and if they want them, right, they can, but I mean, I think that would, cause you, I, I just think it's all, it's all redundant, because you're right. You can't do this without that, you can't do this without that, so you gotta do it anyways.
It's not really part of our zoning decision, it's really just informing the applicant about what they need to do and what, what the requirements are. So maybe that might work.
If we, if we handed it to them at the, at the meeting, say, after the vote, so by the way, it's subject to, uh, conditions, which are boilerplate, and then you have to do it anyways, and so as soon as, as soon as we apply, give them a copy, because we have copies of, and then that goes with the, with the condition.
Well, and you can maybe even break it into section, you know, these are for existing in-laws, and this is also for under construction in-laws, so.
Yeah, yeah.
Cause a lot of that stuff, you're right, it was like, during construction, you have to do X, Y, Z, so I, I, I think you could break it up, you know, so if we had an existing, it would be a much shorter list.
Right, and so.
And it's like a checklist, like, okay, this is the one, this is the, this applies to you, this doesn't, you know, that kind of thing.
And it's almost more confusing to tell them that it has to be less than nine hundred square feet, when they're like, oh, sweet, we can.
Yeah, 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 yeah.
So I, I, you know.
I agree.
Just a thought.
No, you're right. No, I, I'm all for streamlining, let's get it down so it's easier.
Yeah.
So, and I, and I thought.
Maybe when we're done with the.
Yeah, I was just gonna say.
We could, we could take, tackle that as a, a next.
How long we do, you know, I, I, I tried to get to that meeting, and I, I tell you, I, I got to the door and couldn't find my keys in the car that night, so I, I, I went back to my computer and played my games, so how was that meeting?
We're good, so we've been through the whole thing.
Yeah.
Um, we've got a, you know, almost completely, as I was editing, I noticed a couple of things that we had said we would come back to, that we forgot to come back to.
Yeah.
So we're meeting next week with the intent of tackling those couple small things and kind of giving each other the comments, you know, once we've read the whole thing again to, to kind of take it all in as one thing, to make sure it makes sense, and kind of work through those couple little things. Hopefully, we would, I hope that would be our last meeting. Last, we've got a lot to discuss, I don't imagine it, and then it would be kind of ready to, to be vetted and a broader audience.
To go to a public hearing.
Yeah. I think that's sort of been Jim's core, though.
Right.
Well, that was my question.
Uh, we did talk about, you talked about having a, another joint meeting with the Board of Selectmen, zoning board, hunting board.
To go over the changes?
Yes.
Before, before.
I don't recall.
No, but I mean, before a public hearing?
Well, yeah, cause I think there, I think the Board of Selectmen is interested, very interested in what we're doing, how far along we are, so I think it would be
Yeah, cause I.
A good step at the end to say, okay, this is what we've come up with, here, submit it to the Board of Selectmen for their review, because they may have comments or tweaks or whatever, and then, once they're done, then I would imagine it would go out to public hearing.
Well, I mean, that would be a public hearing anyway, but, but.
But more of a formal public hearing for other comments.
So, so, so the night that we met with the, the joint meeting wouldn't be a public hearing to the public?
It would be. I mean, it would be a public hearing.
It would be the Board of Selectmen meeting, probably, but.
But not necessarily.
I mean, they would be, except for.
Public comment.
Yet, you're right, that would be the next step. But this is mostly for the Board of Selectmen for their comment.
I think so, yeah. The signed by law is tricky.
The what?
The signed by law.
Signs, yeah.
Because, you know, there's been so much kind of, there was sort of, you know, a big change with Supreme Court ruling. Um, because, you know, there's been so much kind of, there was sort of, you know, a big change with Supreme Court ruling, uh, last two years ago now. Um, and then, you know, just, which left a lot of uncertainty as to what you can and can't do, so, and then, you know, what had been drafted for, um, last year's proposal, was sort of drafted before that ruling came down, so, kind of like picked and pulled from a couple other more recent zone, uh, si- sign by laws that had been, uh, uh, enacted by other towns, that were approved by the Attorney General. So, I think we made it work with kind of what, what looks right and go along it, you know, and it's sort of one of those things I think is gonna have to operate before it really is gonna, we're gonna find, you know, what makes the tweak here and there.
Well, if, yeah, now, you know, I'm sorry, I mean, I'm, I, I've, I've said this before, because what happens is, until you implement this stuff
Right.
and actually start using it, it looks good on paper, but when you start to use it, it's, oh, wait a minute.
Until you start trying to poke holes in it, and that.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Yeah, it does, it doesn't, but, but, see, the only issue that I have, and I'll, this is what I would bring up at the meeting, is that as long as there's a escape clause, or a way of, of rectifying those issues prior to going to a, uh, like a catcher, we talked about in, in the, in the, uh, the matrix of having at least a, a, an open space somewhere for the, for the subject that doesn't fit anywhere. Uh, as long as you have something like that everywhere, because, because it-
Well, that's why, I think we talked about this the last week, why we broke things into broader categories.
Yeah, yeah.
Like office, as opposed to specific account and insurance, you know, X, Y, Z.
Yeah, because see, in, in, in the, in the, uh, the town,
Right.
the town meeting form of government, just, it just puts stuff so far-
The major the beast, yep.
Yeah, it's, it's way out here to, to resolve issues, and, and so
Right.
you gotta have that, now, did you do that with a sign as well, to have a little bit of a wiggle one?
It, it's very broad, it's, um, it's, it's not by what the sign says or does, um, it's by zoning district.
Uh-huh.
Um, and it basically just regulates size.
Size.
Um, and number, and then it, there's another section that's about temporary signs, which kind of, uh, deals with the election signs, the for sale signs, things of that nature.
Yeah, yeah.
Um, again, in a broad way, it's, because the whole point of the, the Supreme Court ruling that came down last, um, in two thousand fifteen was if the building inspector has to read the sign to determine how to regulate it, then it's not quote-unquote content, content neutral, which is subject to strict scrutiny, which most bylaws don't pass.
Wow.
So, um, it's basically not at all de- designed to be targeted to the specific types of signs. So it's a, face, I think it's what, three temporary signs on a lot at any one time, that can stay up for, I think we ended up at sixty days, which-
With the exception of a real estate sign, which might be, right.
Yeah, the problem, the problem that I always had with, with sign ordinance was those temporary signs that they, they, that they could change the lettering on, you know, the four by six signs that they haul in, and, you know, with an arrow, tho- those, those became a real problem.
Right, so there's, there is a, a portion that speaks to off-premise signs.
Right.
You know, so you can't have an arrow on one lot that points to another lot, that kind of thing.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
So, there is a section that addresses that, and, um-
So how many signs are, is, uh, are businesses aren't allowed to have?
A, in the business? Well, it's in the, it's by district.
I don't remember the- Right.
So, um, in the, in a business or industrial district,
Because right now-
it's maybe incorrect, but I think it, it's, um, it's one for each street frontage.
Right.
One sign per, per, uh, number?
Right, so if you're on a corner lot, you get one, one sign on one street and one sign facing the other street.
Right. But if you're like a strip mall or something like that, you know, there's more, there's allowed a large sign.
Like a pylon type.
And then each, each business can have its own sign as well.
Is, does it, does it restrict the size of, of, of the, of that pylon sign?
Yes.
Yes. So, once these go into, once this by law is accepted, what's gonna happen to the businesses that already have these signs?
Existing would be grandfathered in as non-conformant.
Non-conformant.
So they wouldn't be able to change them, um-
But if they're only allowed to have, say, one sign, what happens if they have like three signs, you know, like they have those flags and stuff like that?
If they have them now-
Do they need to take the, they can, they don't have to take, not even know that?
If someone else comes in and wants to do something, that, they say, oh, well, X, Y, Z's doing it, well, you have to, you have to read the news, the news on you.
Right.
So it's, it ta- it's, it's, it's an evolution, it takes a while for it to turn around before everything comes into compliance, so it's
Right.
That, that's just the way it works.
It's the same way with like, you know, if we change the setbacks for a building.
Yeah, they're all grandfathered.
The existing buildings would, would get to stay, but any new building would have to comply.
But what if somebody has something that's not in the bylaw and they're still doing it? That's what I'm, that's what my question is.
If they've got, if, say they've got six signs and they're each ten square feet, which is, wouldn't be allowed under what we're proposing, and they're currently in existence, and they currently conform to the by, the bylaw we have now, which-
But the bylaws is not, they, they can't have six.
Basically doesn't say anything, so.
Well, if they're in violation now, then they, it's still in violation.
If it was a violation, it would continue to be a violation.
It was a new one, yeah, they're always in violation, yeah. Well, one of the things I was wondering, you know, and I thought of it at the last meeting, uh, I, I have, I have, uh, uh, been familiar and used, used zoning ordinances that had language in there to, to reflect the average, uh, setback whether beside front or rear, a- as to the existing street, and I wonder if that was even addressed.
It's in our current bylaw.
It is?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, I didn't see it there.
It's in there, um, it's only in residential districts, and it's only front setbacks.
Okay. Only front, yeah.
Um, which I think is the one that makes sense.
Well, except that we, if we'd had, uh, four, five on Main Street, would have been, a, a side setback would have worked, and I, to, to me, it seems that-
Well, his argument was that that right of way should be considered a front.
Yeah, no, I know, but, yeah, but even, but even if that wasn't, even if the right of way wasn't there, and there was another parcel of property, it seems to me that, that, uh, if you're not going any closer than what's existing there, I, I mean, that, that's, you know, it's, cause I'm, I had, I had situations where like, like a drawing of this house where you had, you came down and then ended, ended, came in and then went back like that, and they wanted to close that little area off. Well, you know, in Brunswick, boy, they had to keep coming back to a variance to close in, say, you know, close it in. Well, eventually we said, hey, we'll get a lot of that stuff, so we just said, listen, as long as you don't go any further than the existing house, you know, it would be a side setback. You know, it's okay, so that, and that's what I'm, I, I think that's sort of-
Well, you're gonna get a chance to read it.
Yeah.
Yeah, you know what I'm saying?
And give your feedback.
And again, you know, the, the point of this exercise was to kind of take the current bylaw, make it in a format that worked, that had enforcement
Yeah.
aspects to it, which is a huge deficiency of our current bylaw.
Oh, I can't believe that, no, come on.
And, um, and to not really change content, except to the extent that changes in law require that content to change. And I think we, all, including the planning board and the Board of Selectmen, agreed that our uses needed to, um, broaden.
Good point.
Um, so that's what the goal was, so, we haven't expanded that provision, it's sort of, it's written pretty similar, similarly to how it was written in our current bylaw, so.
So you two guys are comfortable with it?
So far, I haven't had a chance to read the whole thing at one time again, so.
We're gonna do the final read- Right, that's, um, so we're meeting next week, so we're gonna read-
The council, though?
Well, yeah, we need to do a full read-through now, now that we've made all the changes, now all the edits are on one place. Right, put it back together, read through it. Um, I have not read it yet, but I will this weekend, go through everything, and then we'll meet together and-
And then I, and now, Sam has been at the meetings as well?
Yes, which is, I think, a really important piece, because, yeah, because he has-
But he's gonna, gonna enforce it?
Well, and he's pointed out things that say, okay, well, this makes it difficult to enforce this way, you know, this, this is what's in the code, this is, you know, what we need to say, and
This is what, this is what-
He's been very helpful, yeah, and just trying to make sure that the wording is correct, and it's helpful, so.
Good, yeah, well, that's very good.
I think it's been a good group, and poor Casey has worked her little fingers to the bone.
Well, you know, you know, uh- Well, I'll tell you, you know, uh, I, I don't know how many years I've been on-
I can't believe it's been, going on a year that we've been working on it, too, like, yeah.
I know, well, I mean, I, I, I probably somewhere have, have the first copy that was handed to me, that, one of the first night I was on the boards, which, I don't know, five, six years ago, and nothing ever happened, and so, all of a sudden, we're, we're in a point of maybe, maybe getting, getting resolution.
It's amazing.
That's good.
Cause remember, we tried before too, and ran into trouble, so it's like, it's finally nice to get to this point.
Yeah.
Let's just hope Tom hitting the boost.
Well, the, the thing is, you know, one, one of the things I think is gonna happen is it's, it's gonna clarify a lot of things, and, and also, it may eliminate the, the need of, of people having to come down here on, on some of the things, which is really-
I think that's, I think that's a good goal.
Yeah, right, well, it's always-
It's not like we're paid, really, to hear them, so.
Yeah, yeah.
You know, the more people, the, the, I think, I've always been a big advocate of that, that the clearer it is in the bylaw, the less you have to hear appeals, right? I mean, so if it's pretty black and white.
And there should be some sort of basic uses that we all agree are good, are appropriate uses for certain areas.
Uh, correct.
Uh, let, uh, let me just say that I, I, we have been discussing, what, the, the dog issue down here on, uh,
Yes.
They're in there.
Oh, yeah, they're in there a while.
Yeah, I've seen them, yeah, yeah.
Yeah, good.
That's wonderful, yeah.
Uh, Mike Wood, I think, was gonna adopt one of their dogs.
Oh, really?
Oh, really?
So, you can adopt dogs down there?
Yeah.
I thought that they were just in transit to someone who's gonna-
I think they-
Well, the, the rescue itself adopts dogs, I don't know if they do it out of that particular occasion, but, but it's the rescue itself that does, yeah.
Yeah.